Hello.
Hey Mike, how are you?
Good, what's up?
I just wanted to make sure you're available.
You bet. I'm sitting here, sitting here, ready to go, except that I might carry some trash out to the dumpster here for a minute. But yeah, so who else gonna be there?
Uh, I know you and Larry. I did not confirm. I didn't hear anything from Ralph or Barzati.
Okay, so at least it'll be three of us, huh?
Yes, for sure, three of us.
And I thought I read, I thought I read some minutes, but now I'm looking for them. I printed out the, uh, you know, the packet. But I'm trying to see where the minutes are. But anyway, I'm just gonna refresh myself on them, but I did read them once. But yeah, so are we gonna check with Kevin and see if he's got the permits for this coming year?
Yeah, we can ask him.
You know, I mean, most years...
Actually, they order, I think they order in December and they get it before or something. I think last year they actually had it on time, maybe?
I think they were late again, I thought, but I think they're late every year. You know, we start every year and they don't have the permits for like three, four weeks, but I don't know, maybe they were, maybe they were with it last year. I just don't ever remember them being on time with them.
I think last year was the first time they actually had it on time, but you can definitely ask them.
Well, okay.
They're supposed to give us a presentation on, uh, you know, on not having, because Larry was bringing, you know, SP Plus was asking questions and we were looking at doing, uh, you know, whatever the stagecoach did over there, basically just putting a sign up, no meter, no nothing, everybody goes, uh, scans like a little barcode or they can go and download the app and it's done deal.
Yeah.
Um, so they're supposed to bring a presentation today because we were saying, well, some SP Plus can save us a lot of money. And the minute we said that, Kevin was like, oh, we can, we can do it.
Yeah, but...
Why aren't you doing it to begin with? Why are we paying this much money anyway?
Well, I think Kevin, I think Kevin told me and I didn't go check it, but he told me that we already had the, uh, co, the, you know, the little UPS codes.
We, we, we do, but they still, I mean, for the two, for those two things, you have internet connection, you have software, you have, it's like forty, forty thousand dollars we can save, not to mention not having employees.
Yeah, but also fifty people could pay all at the same time. They don't have to stand in line to wait for the machines. So, and so I...
Let's see what they have to say today.
Okay.
Uh, and then we can bring SP Plus on next month for a different presentation.
Yeah. Well, sounds good. And I mean, I just wonder who else can do that, you know? But, uh...
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. Maybe there is other, other companies too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll see in ten, oh, five minutes or so, you bet. Thanks. You guys have any questions?
How much is this painting, sir?
You know, I'd do like five hundred on that. It's kind of a neat design.
That is really different.
It's a locally done thing.
Really?
And I have not been able to track, track down that artist, but you know?
The W. Shepherd?
Yeah, there was a business. You know what I will do though, and what are the initials on that?
W, I think it's W. S. H.
P. A. R. D.
Yes.
You know, hang on a sec. Let me grab a business directory and see if it tells me anything, because, uh,
Is that awful?
You know, Shepherd Citations was a publishing company in Colorado. They published law books.
How in our...
I just wonder if it's spelled the same way?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Stuff like that, kind of. Yeah. For sure. That's like refined, you know?
Might be a little...
That's pretty too. That would be something at work. Oh, that's Garden of the Gods.
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Look at the moose up here. Look at that up.
Yeah.
Look how big that is. Look at this spread on him.
The thing that's on here from the river.
Yeah, is that on the tree?
What's that?
Or my dad has one thingy there, rocks. Yeah.
He's got a rock?
He has, what, thirty? Three. Plus a shoulder mound. I like the shank away from that. I like the bench down, that's good. Do you make the belts here?
No, a friend of ours makes those down in Gallup.
They're nice.
Yeah. Okay, so here's Shepherd Citations. And what were the initials on that one deal?
W dot Shepherd.
W?
And there's no H in it. Was there no H in Shepherd, Catlin? Well, there was. I'll show you what I know.
S. H.
P. A. R. D.
Yeah. It looks like an R instead of a P.
No.
Here's a, it's WB?
Might be a WB.
Is it a WB?
I can't tell. Um, it could either be an H or a B.
So it could be a B.
Oh, wait, it's way down here. It's W. E. Yeah, it's Shepherd, common spelling, S. H. E. P. A. R. D.
I don't know what you mean by common spelling.
Like with the H, yeah, Shepherd.
S. H. E. P. A. R. D.
Instead of P. A. R. D. So it's an A. R. D.
No, yeah, but it's no, no, no P. H., just P. A. R. D., right?
Well, here, I'll show you.
Because they have, they have some different spellings here.
It looks like P.
If you get right down with fun and... Oh, S. H. E. Oh, it's just like sweet come, this whole thing here, the law for the price of it.
I guess that's what it is. Or just...
So you can...
This is what it is.
See, here's, there's a one for it, but that's the B.
Hmm, it could be. That's the first thing. It is.
It could be yours. What do you, what do you think?
I don't think we're gonna do this for that prize.
Yeah.
Um, I think we'll keep it for, like, prospect, they can work it all.
Yeah. You don't want, you don't wanna...
Thank you, though.
Pike speak thing, okay. Hey, Shimmy, Larry, say something, would you?
Yep.
I'm on it.
Oh, there we go, there we go. Okay, I just didn't hear anybody saying anything and I could see Nicole talking, but I couldn't hear anything, so I just wondering if my thing, my computer was working or not. So thanks.
Sounds like it is. I can hear you fine.
Oh, good, good. All righty.
I give it a couple more minutes to see if, uh, Ralph is gonna join in Barzati as well. If not, uh, we can, we can probably start.
Okay.
Hey Shimmy, this is Adam. Uh, I'm over at Loses right now, so I'm all set.
Okay, um, did you see my email?
Yep, that's what I just saw.
Okay. You're, I don't know if you're on the agenda for this, uh, meeting and I saw the email before, but I thought that you're asking the city to help you, not the metro. Is that correct?
The city told us we had to ask the metro.
Okay, and when do you want this, uh, when did you want this for? What, you didn't, you did not write a date on your email?
Uh, the breakfast is this Saturday.
The eleventh.
The eleventh.
Got it. Um... Well, I'll ask the board what they, if they wanna discuss it or not, um, since it's not on the agenda.
Yep, copy that.
Okay. I'm gonna forward that email real quick and then, uh, I'll start the meeting if they're not here by then. Okay, let's see if they are here. They are not, but Larry and Mike are here. I would say we can, we can start. Is everyone okay with that?
I'm okay.
I'm good.
Okay, let me find the packet from Elena real quick. All right, uh, this meeting is for the Metro District, November eighth, um, and we are a little behind. It is three thirty-five. Um, Elena, would you be nice and do the roll call for us?
Yep.
Thank you.
Chairman Shimmy Shlomo.
Here.
Director Michael Graham.
Here.
Director Larry Fox.
Here.
Secretary Michael Barzati.
Not here.
Treasurer Ralph Jacobson.
Not here.
Are they excused?
Um, they didn't tell me anything, so I'm hoping they will join us a little bit later. If not, uh, they will be excused.
Okay.
Um, all right, the approval of the agenda. Um, I'm okay leaving it the way it is. I just wanted to mention, um, there is a request. I just sent you guys an email, Mike and Larry. If you wanna take a look at it, it's a request. Um, it's not on the agenda. Um, we can discuss it too, um, at the end of the meeting or off the meeting, if you guys want. It's up to you. Um, I did not have, uh, time to, um, look at it and I apologize for that. Uh, it's been a busy week. I did see the email, um, but there was no date on the, um, request over there. So I didn't know if it's urgent or not. Um, I just didn't even have the time to, uh, reply to Adam. My apologies.
Uh, Shimmy, if I may, if it's not on the agenda and it does need a board's vote for you to approve it, then we should not discuss it.
Okay, all right, well, that settles that. Um...
All right, hey, we're, we're just gonna drop off then. Uh, thanks for your time and consideration on it, but, uh, it's a Saturday, so we'll go to plan B. I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Sorry, I couldn't help you. Adam, my apologies.
Oh, don't worry, buddy. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, um, that settles that. Um, okay, I'll approve, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda the way it is. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 That would be a three to zero. Um, all right, the approval of the September twentieth regular meeting minutes. Um, did you, were you able to find the minutes, Mike? Are you good on that?
You know, I read them and I was good with it and I was just gonna refresh myself, but can anybody tell me what page of the packet they're on? Because...
Uh, it is page three, I believe, on, uh, MNS, uh, attachment.
Okay. Well, I know I read them before and I was okay with it. I was just gonna refresh my memory, but somehow when I printed it, printed it out, it disappeared. Huh.
Okay.
Okay, well, anyway, I, I was good with it.
Okay, did you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I motion, we approve the, uh, the agenda. I remember the minutes from, is it September, right?
Uh, that is from September.
Right, correct.
A no caller.
Um, just for the record, uh, you were not present in that meeting. Can you still vote on it, just to make sure, Elena? Is that okay? He did, he did go over the minutes and, uh, read them.
That's fine, yeah.
Right. And I don't know, am I supposed to second that or does Larry have to second it?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that would be three, three to zero. Um, okay, next one is the report, the finance report. Hi, Nicole.
Hello. Yeah, so my, my top priority today is for you guys to look at the budget and approve it. I know we've, I brought it to the last two meetings. I wasn't asked to make any other changes, but if somebody has any questions or wants to change something, we can still do that. Um, it will change, uh, the resolutions for as far as the fund balances go, if that were to occur. Um...
Okay, I, I have just a small, the only thing I have was, uh, changing, I believe, the amount, um, that we were about to pay to the city. Um, I think it was, can you remind me if it was forty-eight thousand to begin with on the IGA? Nicole?
The original amount I had changed because, and that was after the first presentation of the budget to you, after I removed the addition of, uh, time that I felt Juan would be participating.
Okay, I'm, uh, I do have a problem with that. I thought that by now, uh, the city would approach and try to negotiate the IGA. No one has done that. Um, and I would probably suggest leaving it the way it was, since we did not negotiate it with the city. It should stay the same, in my opinion. Um, I can hear different opinions, Mike, Larry.
So Shimmy, you're telling me that you want it to remain the same. It is, has remained the same, with the exception, I took off the, um, annual amounts for doing, uh, the painting as that looks like it's going to be contracted work from now into the future, so I don't understand what you want me to do that's different than what's being presented.
Um, I, I can't find what's presented, so give me one second. Um, that's why I was asking...
I'm sharing my screen now. Can you not see that?
Uh, I was trying to find it on my computer, so it's bigger, but, uh...
No, I didn't, I don't see it on the packet and I...
No, it's not.
So it was...
Okay.
I, I, I'm afraid. I gave, uh, Elena my documents at the last minute yesterday, so that, that's my fault, but, um...
Okay, um, I believe, was it, uh, was it City Services at forty-four thousand dollars or forty-seven thousand dollars before?
It was forty-seven thousand last year. This year, it's fifty-four thousand.
Okay, and I think that's what I was, uh, trying to go to. Is the forty-seven thousand part of the IGA? Is that what we agreed on, on the IGA? Is that where that number shows up, Nicole?
So I'm going to go ahead and get that document back out and present that again?
Uh, if you're referring to the forty-seven thousand dollars, I would like it to go back to the forty-seven thousand dollars, since the city did not renegotiate it.
Forty, it cannot be the same amount. There, there was, there's going to be, uh, a COLA amount that is increasing our wages this next year, and so that has been wrapped into that. Um, let me pull it up, because...
Okay.
I, apparently, we don't remember going over that, so let me get it pulled up. Thanks.
Okay. And I totally understand everything is going on, but the city did not renegotiate the IGA with us.
Shimmy, this is not, this is the same IGA. This is letting you know what the city amounts are for those services. It, that did not change.
Okay. So what's the difference between the forty-seven thousand to fifty-four?
Let me pull, let, I'm gonna pull that up right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So this is the, um, let me do a share again, 'cause you're probably, this probably isn't showing up for you. So this is a spreadsheet that we've been using consistently from year to year.
Yeah.
Um, and we went over these and we discussed the adding, um, Becky's time into this and we changed those hours to be a percentage of what it is for all of the sales. I had added Juan into here and I removed that. I also have removed the striping, having that amount of pay in there.
Okay.
And so this is the new amount with the COLA increase. In the COLA increase that I put in here was four percent.
So in other words, Nicole, if I understand right, is, um, as the rates go up, um, it's just gonna go up and no renegotiation is needed for the city?
Correct.
So what does the IGA give us? Any, there's no, if it's, if it's, if it's telling me that it's forty-eight thousand dollar agreement, uh, and it's not, what does it give me?
The IGA simply states that, um, we can provide these services and that Metro will reimburse us for the services that we provide.
Gotcha. Okay, and before it was forty-eight and now it's gonna cost us about fifty-four. Okay.
Okay.
But, but you know what?
Yes, Mike?
What I'm seeing here is we've added two more administrators onto this. You know, before we had Kevin. Now we got Kevin and Juan and we have a bookkeeper. So is the bookkeeper an employee of the parking department?
Yes, Becky who, who is um, at the parking office and takes care of of people that come in to complain about enforcement issues.
Okay, so she's,
She also, and she also processes the permits, I did not put Chance in there, Chance is working there pretty much full-time also, I only added hours for Becky, because we did not have her in there, um, so, that, that's where these are, and if we make changes to how um, things are collected or done, we can, we can probably do a mid-year budget amendment and change the amount based off of your guys' discussions on possibly not having parking staff anymore.
Yeah.
How mu, how much did we, how much did we spend last year, do we spend the entire budgeted amount, the forty-seven seven?
So, we just, we just put this in as an amount for the whole year, and then if there are additional services, then we um, are supposed to go, oh, this is how much it's going to cost, and do you still want us to do it?
Questions, Larry? Larry, you still with us?
Oh, Larry, he looks like he's muted.
Okay.
Yeah, I muted myself, so I could finish my coughing spell. No, I don't have any questions. Okay, it looks fine to me.
Okay, Mike, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Alright, and I did not, I did not do a monthly one, because I wanted this to be the focus, so we'll go ahead, we'll need to have the budget approved and that'll need to be done by resolution. And the resolutions are on your packet in addition to the um, the uh, letter that I created for you.
Thank you, Nicole. Um, did you guys wanna move to the parking report, uh, and then uh, on new business, do the resolution? Or did you wanna get that uh, out of the way?
And do the resolutions now, since we're right there.
Okay, go ahead and do that for us, Larry.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we pass resolution four dash two-three, uh, adopting the revised budget for next year.
Is there a second?
Cause I'll second it.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that would be three to zero.
Will you keep going?
I think we should do all three, one shot.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution five, dash two-three, amending the twenty-twenty-three conservation trust fund budget, adopting the budget for the calendar year of twenty-twenty-four.
Is there a second?
And second that.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that would be three to zero, last one, Larry?
And I'll make a uh, motion that we adopt resolution six, dash two-three, setting the uh, uh, mill levy for the coming year at point four-four mils, which is incredibly low for any governmental agency, I think we've done a wonderful job there.
Is there a second?
I would second the motion.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that would be three to zero, thank you.
I say that because when we first started this metro district, our mill levy was approximately fourteen mils. Now, it is less than half a mil. Not many governmental agencies can say they've done that. Lower taxes.
We acknowledge your annual accolades.
Yeah, you done, you, Larry.
Thank you, Nicole.
You know, you know, that, it really is amazing, though, that is a great thing. I mean, and tha, and then you guys built the Smishny lot in betwe, you know, during that time when you were lowering it, so that really is a big accomplishment.
Absolutely. Okay, thanks, everyone, going back to the reports, uh, thank you, Nicole, thanks for the finance report, um, Kevin? Is Kevin here?
I'm here.
Hey, how you doing?
Uh, good, Larry sent his coffin spell my way, but I'm doing good. Overall revenue for October was thirty-one thousand three hundred eighty-five, that's a decrease of thirteen percent year-over-year. Overall transactions were fifty-four oh-six, that's a decrease of six hundred and eighty-one year-over-year. Uh, permit sales were sixty dollars, that's a decrease of sixty dollars or fifty percent year-over-year. Uh, there were forty-one total citations issued, that's a decrease of seven year-over-year. And I could break down into individual lots if you'd like, the reason for the decrease is, we had two reasons. Both lots were closed for the seal coat and striping for two days, and then we had coffin races, which closed the Wichita lot during that day, and twelve of those spaces in Smishny were reserved for ADA, so that explains the decrease, they're not a very big decrease, thirteen and fourteen percent respectively between the two lots.
Okay, uh, I, I was curious about that, considering that the Cannon lot had a, had a healthy increase.
Yeah, we did have both the lots closed to get seal-coated, restriped in early October, and then coffin races at the end of October.
Yep, okay.
I've, I've got a question for Kevin, I guess, I thought the chamber had asked for forty-two spaces, are you saying they took the whole lot?
Uh, if I remember correctly, it was the entire Wichita lot, right, Jimmy?
Uh, it was not the entire Wichita lot, they asked, uh, Jenna asked for specific uh, spaces. Um, I did not check that day, um, how many she actually did take or not, to be honest. Um,
Oh, I'm sorry, thirty-five in Wichita, I've got the, I've got her sheet right here, thirty-five.
And then she did ask for ten uh, ten spots at Smishny for uh, handicap, that I know.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Cool.
And then, um, I'm not sure if you guys are gonna put together an invoice for those, or if you'd like me to, to send to the chamber to pay for those spaces.
Uh, if you could, that would be amazing.
Okay, I can put that together for you.
Thank you. Um, any questions for Kevin?
Yeah, Kevin, well, I'll ask you again, I asked you last week, last month, and you answered it nicely, the citations that we're doing in this month in Smishny and, and Cannon lot, I, I mean, Smishny and Wichita, what, how, you have a breakdown on, how many of those were for parking violations versus uh, uh, other types of violations?
I can get you that real quick, if you guys would like to move on.
Yeah, I, I would like to know that.
Okay. I'll get you guys that information, and I'll let you know when I have it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, okay, we can uh, move to uh, new business, and we already did one, two, and three, we're at four with alternative payment method presentation, which is, I believe, Kevin and Juan as well, so, Juan is here, maybe he can help us in the meantime. Let me check if he is here or not.
Yeah, I can see him.
Yeah, but um, he's not responding yet, so, give him a couple more seconds, Juan, if you're here, just uh, let us know.
He's muted, if that means anything.
He just turned to muted, um, see? Oh, he's not muted anymore, but he's, I don't think he's next to his computer, he's just had it, um, just open, so, we'll give a couple more seconds for Kevin.
I'm ready to go, I'll give you those numbers real quick, uh, Wichita lot, we had one handicap violation, two expired, um, or nine expired meter or didn't pay at all, six registration tickets. The Smishny lot had twelve expired or didn't pay and fourteen registration tickets.
Okay.
Uh, what's the, what's the fee for the registration, Juan, Kevin?
A hundred dollars, and that's set by the state of Colorado.
Uh, can, can you give one of those every day, again and again and again? Or is that once every so long, or how does that work on the registration?
The red, well, we do have an ordinance that allows us to write that ticket every two hours, that ticket, we don't really follow that with, cause for somebody to get that ticket while they're at work and then try to get to the D M V, that is a daily ticket, though, every day that that vehicle's in violation, it can get a ticket.
Got it, and it's a hundred dollars every time, it doesn't change.
Correct, um, and on that note, there is a, it's in the twenty-twenty model traffic code, that fifty percent of all handicap violations are to be sent to the state, and it goes into the handicap enforcement at the state level, so, that will essentially be a seventy-five dollar uh, amount back to the Metro Board on that ticket, because there, there's a law that fifty percent of that has to go to the state.
And that's a hundred and fifty dollar ticket for handicap?
Yeah.
Gotcha, and the regular expired meter or non-pay, non-payment, what, what is that?
Uh, first offense is thirty-five dollars, second offense is seventy, third offense is a hundred and five, and they stay at a hundred and five for twelve months.
Okay.
Okay, so, the uh, you, you do, you do give them tickets then, I like, in the, in the Smishny lot there, you had twenty-six tickets, twelve of them, less than half of them were for actual parking lot violations, is that right? And that was kind of what I got last month, it was, as I recall, it was even less than, or less than half, were for actual parking lot violations.
Correct.
So, a parking lot violation is, while it happens, it's not a common item.
Not in that lot, no, it seems that people think that being on the west end of town, their car won't be found with expired license plates. We have that a lot more common down there. We even have those more on street on that end of town.
Yeah, I am surprised that how many people don't pay for their license plate when they're supposed to, that is somewhat surprising to me, since it's a annual event.
I'm, I'm surprised when we see twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-nineteen violations. We're finding tags that old.
Wow.
Yeah.
Huh. Okay, alright, well, thanks, Kevin, I appreciate that, and what you've done here, you've done good.
Thank you, I'll pass that on to the rest of the staff. Alright, so, so, I will start sharing this, my screen to go into that PowerPoint presentation, and we'll go over the Q R codes.
Okay.
Did everybody see?
So far, a black, uh, oh, now we can.
Alrighty, so this is gonna be a presentation for the Q R code paid apart to that Manitou Springs is starting to implement.
Okay.
Um, we're, we're moving from the text-to-pay feature to a Q R code, and it's all through the same vendor, so it's all through T Two Systems. Uh, Juan and I discussed it and I've reached out to our reps, and they were able to generate a Q R code for us. Um, it's ease of use for the user and the visitor, you can simply scan that Q R code on any of the signs, and we can place the signs throughout the lot, strategic places, uh, by where the kiosks were, all that. Um, and you'll be directed to a link to input all the vehicle information, the amount of time you wanna park, and your payment info. We did keep the text-to-pay option on the bottom of the new signs, for people that don't want to scan a Q R code and would rather just do the text message, so they have that option listed as well. Um, T Two Systems will then upload all the valid parking sessions to the mobile enforcement app that the department uses in real time, and that helps with the real time, it avoids unnecessary citations, so, we're, we don't have a lag of it trying to upload into our system, it's, as soon as it's approved, on the payment side, it's in our system. Um, you sign up and you can get receipts and notifications emailed or text message to yours, to you, uh, letting you know that your time is expiring, gives you the option to extend the time, and that will work anywhere that the user has cell service, and there's no hardware or equipment that will maintain or malfunction using the Q R code system or the text-to-pay. Uh, currently, if anybody's been out in the lot, the sign on the left is what's out there now, it's got the text code and the number to text the two. The one on the right is the new sign that we had designed, it's got a prominent Q R code in the center, the text-to-park information is still down on the bottom, that way, the users that don't feel comfortable or quite understand the Q R code can still have that text option. Uh, the instructions on how to pay to park, scan the Q R code, we've kind of went over this, uh, enter the license plate number, select the time, enter your information for receipts and text message notifications, it will then send you a verification code, it'll prompt you to enter that code when you receive it, enter your payment information, so this is what the user will see on the cellphone, when they scan that code or send that text code, it will take them to the Manitou Springs lot, which is designated as the Metropolitan District, enter the license plate number, click the next button, which will highlight when the plate number's in there, breaks down the rates, so the user knows, depending on what time they park, the time expires and the cost, and it also was that all-day option. After that, it will generate kind of a confirmation page showing you when you're set to expire, what that fee is, and it gives you the option to change if you decide, well, maybe I wanna do two hours instead of one hour. Click that next button, here's where it will prompt you to enter your cellphone number and email address, this is where you'll get your text notifications and your receipts. Here's, on the left, is that verification code I was telling you about, this will auto-populate, you'll receive a text message, just enter that code, confirm, click to add new payment, and this will only happen the first time the user uses this, this feature. It will save that information for future transactions, so this step will eliminate if it's a return user. Once you enter your card information, it will have you verify and submit, so you click submit, you'll have your success screen showing you what everything is. The monthly subscription cost for the mobile pay is eighty-three thirty-three a month for the city to access and use that service, it breaks down to about sixteen sixty a zone, and we have five different zones in the city that we're using that, there is a gateway usage fee of twelve cents per transaction, um, an overage fee of twenty-nine cents, so, T Two, since this is a very new service, it's barely a year old, um, they're still trying to come up with usage amounts to kind of ju, uh, eliminate these overage fees. Uh, Manitou was one of the first to jo, join and use this service, so, they're asking us a lot of feedback and watching our reporting to see what an average weekend, summer day would look like, to generate a package around that, so that is in the works. Integrity Merchant Services Solutions is the backend that we use to process all the credit card transactions, and it's a three percent fee of the total revenue collected for the month. Um, that's broken down here, the bill on the left shows the T Two side of it, and the one on the right is the breakdown for the Integrity Merchant Solutions, which shows the fees, and that was just a basic map to get me to that three percent on there. And that's the end of the presentation, it's pretty self-explanatory, simple to use, and it's just a variation of what the city's currently using with text-to-pay.
Okay, let me, let me just back up one screen there. Alright, monthly subscription, that's the city's, what would ours be?
So, that would be sixteen sixty-six, cause we have one subscription that covers the entire city, and it just breaks down per zone, and Metro only has the one zone, we combine the two lots uh, for revenue purposes, transaction tra, uh, tracking and enforcement. So, it just, it simplified it to keep the two lots as one zone.
Okay, subscri, that's, so, sixteen dollars a month subscription?
Yes.
Okay, then, twelve cents per transaction.
Yeah.
And it varies depending upon usage. There is depending upon usage. What does that mean?
Let me pull one of the bills that I can see a little bigger and I can let you know.
Jeremy, can, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Yeah, no, I apologize. I have an exterior speaker. I've been having issues with it all day. But um, the advantage of this also is that um, you don't, you don't need the pay stations. Uh, this. The ones that it kind of affect, it, it affects most are the people who are used to paying cash and coin. But other than that, you don't even need the equipment. A QR code does it all. And it's a lot faster than the, the text to pay. Because all you do is you put the cam- people are in a hurry, you know, they want to, once it scans it. It takes you automatically to that screen, you know, um. You know, how many hours do you want? And you just have to throw the license plate number and that's basically it. Uh, it's a, it's a faster process than the, than the text to pay. But uh, that's a big advantage that you don't, you don't need the pay station where you have to keep loading it with receipt, up, upgrading uh, software over the, over time. Uh, so it's a big advantage.
Thanks for bringing that up, Juan. That will also eliminate the seventy dollar a month iris subscription. Per machine. So that will save the metro district two hundred and ten dollars a month, just to have the software in those machines.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, still back to twelve, twelve cents per transaction. And that depends on varies depending on usage. Does it vary up, down?
Uh, I'm still trying to find that most recent invoice I have.
If, if I were to guess Larry, um, they charge twelve, twelve cents, they're looking at, you know. They probably want some feedback to see how many transaction and if it's going to be a lot, they might be able to do lower. Uh, the lowest I pays five cents. So it can definitely go lower.
Yeah, so the last bill where I got the twelve cents, there were. Twelve hundred and thirty-one transactions each at the twelve cents. Um, so looking at this. We've got one that was just under forty-five hundred and it was about nine cents. So if there, when you hit that threshold, like Shimi was saying, it'll either up or down that price.
Okay, then the overage usage fee, I don't understand that at all.
So that was, figure out a little bit back up. Um, they. They have set transaction amounts right now. So like you can buy, and we're on the highest that they offer. Um, so you can buy like five hundred transactions and then anything above that would be a twenty-nine cent overage fee. Uh, because of the system still new, they're, like I said, they're monitoring our usage because we were one of the first to join. To come up with new plans or possibly an unlimited plan. But that monthly subscription would probably change based off of an unlimited plan. Um, just to try to save the, some costs on the, their client side, so our side. Uh, because this is a very popular feature. We were using Park Mobile up until we switched to the mobile pay. And we've seen an explosion in usage because this is an easier system.
Okay, a- again, I'm, I'm still confused. You buy five hundred, what does five hundred cost you?
I would have to pull that contract. It's been a while since we've looked at it and I'm actively working with them on uh.
Okay, that's why I'm really, I, I gotta admit Kevin, I'm totally confused. You buy five hundred, in other words, you, you, you pay for something to start with. Then if you go over that, you pay more and you still have twelve cents per transaction. I'm, I'm very confused about this.
So that's where it would go down. Um, because we're into that overage. So let me see if I can find that. Uh, so that was.
I, I guess the first question is, okay, I buy five hundred, what does that cost me?
Oh, five hundred was, it was just a round number that I chose.
Okay.
Um, I'm trying to track everything down right now.
Okay, then, in the end, you paid three percent of the total revenue. Let me ask you this. On, on the bill you have, what did it cost you per transaction?
Um, twelve cents per transaction and then um.
You know how many transactions you got, you know what your bill is.
Right.
Divide your transaction by the, the amount, or the bill by the number of transactions.
So I'm going to jump in here and explain that the merch, the integrity merchant solutions is the. That three percent is for that credit card company to, or, or for them to process the credit card.
Understand.
And the first ones are to use the equipment for the parking space.
I understand that. What I'm trying to get at is what does it cost me per transaction? And, and that, the only way you get that is, you know how many transactions you got. You know what your total bill is of everything you had to pay for the month. Divide the total by the number of transactions.
So for the Manitou Springs lots on the September bill that I have, it's twelve cents per transaction is what it showed. We had twelve hundred and thirty-one transactions, twelve cents apiece for a total price of one forty-seven seventy-two.
Yeah, but then you still have the sixteen dollars per lot and then you still got three percent at the end.
Right.
Okay, that.
The three percent is separate off of the mobile pay. That is the banking.
What I'm trying to get at is what does it cost per transaction? And I'm not getting that.
So based off the bill for. The metro lots, it's twelve cents per transaction.
It's more than that. You still got sixteen dollars per, per lot and you still got three percent.
But, but, but the thing that I, I still don't understand this overage. I mean, you mean it's cheaper at first and then the more transactions, then you pay more?
Right.
You pay, you pay twenty-nine cents when you create more volume?
Yeah.
I think what he means, maybe Mike, what he means is they, 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 I think they're committed maybe for five hundred minimum. And then if there is going over, they pay for the, like, extra for the rest. Is that right, Kevin?
Yeah, you, the way, the way it works is that you set that up with the vendor. So let's just say for three thousand transactions, um, on a, on average. You will pay the twelve cent, you will pay the, can you go to the other screen, uh, Kevin, previous screen? You, you will, you will pay the twelve, uh, you'll set that up. And let's just say. Uh, you're expecting like a, at the end of the year, you expect a, another three thousand transactions. And what happens is that that per transit, per try, the twelve cents per transaction will lower. Because now you're increasing uh, the, the number of transactions that you're having per year. But if you go over that number, that, let's just say that six thousand over the following year. Then you will be responsible to pay that overage, uh, that overage, uh, usage fee.
And Larry, I was able, I wrapped my head around what you were asking. With all the fees included, it's ninety-seven cents per transaction.
It's how much?
Ninety-seven cents.
Ninety-seven cents per transaction. That's what I was getting at. That's a far cry higher than twelve cents per transaction.
Yeah, no, it took me a minute to understand what you were asking, but I figured it out.
Ninety-seven cents, okay. All right, that makes more sense to me. Whole lot more sense. Okay. All right.
And at the same time, we are eliminating, if we're going this way, we're eliminating. Um, multiple fees. Is that correct, Kevin?
Yes, that will eliminate the seventy dollar a month. Um. I'm sorry.
Per, per machine?
Yes, the iris subscription per month. Um. And like Juan said, it'll eliminate the cost of receipt paper. It will reduce the warranty that you guys pay for because we don't have that hardware to need the warranty on. It would just be a cost for signage.
Um, and how about that uh, internet connection? Because we don't need any internet anymore. Is that, is that correct?
It would reduce that, yes, but because if I, and Nicole can answer this better, that would be paid out of that line, but it would adjust, correct Nicole?
Whoops, I, I, there's a new curve ball there. We pay an internet connection?
Yes.
That is current.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with that bill. I'm sorry.
There is no internet connect, don't, don't the city charge uh?
It, it's a line item you have in their budget, Nicole?
Yeah, I know. It's, it's like it's twenty-four thousand or so.
Oh, you mean the, for the two T bills?
Yes.
Okay. Then, yeah, that would be a correct assumption that we would not have to pay that much, correct?
Right.
Pay that much or pay it at all.
Probably pay it all, Larry.
And that's what, twenty-four thousand at the moment?
If T2 doesn't require connection to get that information to them, then we won't have that bill.
Okay, okay.
I've got a couple of ideas from listening in on this. And one of them, when I looked at the three percent credit card fee, that seems way high for me. Because I pay two point three here at my store with no transaction fee. And uh, I'm trying to figure out how to get it down because so many people use debit cards. It shouldn't even be that high. But what I calculated was at three percent, uh, if we were getting at it. Uh, say two point three instead of three percent, that's a seventy, or that's a um. Point three percent difference.
Mike, what merchant encounter are you going through?
Uh, GoDaddy. But the one I had before that was with Chase and it was two point three. Okay, so there's no need to pay more than two point three, but here's the other issue. Is if people used Apple Pay, there would be zero uh, credit card fee. And, you know, at one time I had a deal set up with uh. Oh, it was before Chase, but where the uh, if people used a debit card, it only cost me fifty cents, no matter how much they paid. So you know, a ten, or a thousand dollar purchase cost me fifty cents to take. Now they took that away from me. But I'm finding out from one credit card processing company that I could probably get that back. I can probably get an account. That'll only charge me fifty cents per transaction.
We also, we also have to have something where people have an agreement with uh, who is providing, whoever is providing us with the service. So it has to be a merchant account who has an agreement with T2 also. We don't get to necessarily dictate that, but we can certainly ask and look.
And that was a question, but three percent, I mean, Shimi, what, what are your, what do you pay uh, percentage wise? Usually.
Anywhere, I know that uh, it's okay to pay un- up until three percent anywhere. Um, when you get to three percent, it's time to renegotiate. Um, that's what I usually do in my stores. And uh, no, I don't pay the three percent either and uh, five, five cents. Uh, they, they, there's also two different. Um, I think they call it a tier. One of them is a tier program. One of them is something else when you pay. Uh, a sum of your ticket or uh, just um, five cents per transaction plus something. So it just, they play with you. They show you two different things. Um, but as long as you're gonna go and, you know, uh, go to the market and cer- research and uh, do your. Do your research there, um, every two or three years, you'll be just fine. If you're gonna wait seven, eight, nine years. It will go over the three percent guaranteed.
We, we basically just chose one of the ones that they had get, uh, gave us to choose from, um, from. Cause T2 gave us three options and that's, that's how we made that decision, but.
How much, how much do we, how much do we charge a year?
Always we, Mike.
Uh, the, how much?
What do you mean by charge for you?
How much does the city take in picket credit card payments for all of their parking? Because it's three percent, you're paying another. Third more than you should at three percent. So if you were, if you were charging, if they're charging thirty-five or. Three point five million a year citywide. Um. I gotta use my calculator here. I can't do this in my head. But if you were doing three and a half million a year, um.
So Mike, we have different merchant accounts for different services because of what I told you about the structure of them working with certain companies.
Well, yeah, I understand, but you ought to be able to find a company that'll do it for two point three. I'm just saying there's.
Well, now that you've brought that to my attention, you know that that's going to be on my list of things to do. Thanks.
You're, you're, you're welcome. But uh. You know, the difference, uh, i- if we did three and a half million times three percent. Um. You know, that's a hundred and five thousand. A year in those fees and it could have been, you could save about thirty thousand.
Yeah, twenty, thirty thousand.
Thirty, thirty thousand dollars is kind of worth asking.
I wouldn't mind it if it's thirty thousand dollars, believe me. So yeah, thanks, thanks. Like I said, thanks, Mike.
Okay, okay.
Um, okay, now back to, back to the subject. So, so I'm just trying to figure out. Uh, a couple of more things that we're eliminating. I remember for a fact. Uh, that was that, I believe it was twenty-four thousand dollars for that internet connection or whatever that is. Um. Uh, wasn't there something else that we would eliminate with that? Anybody remember?
Uh, bank charges. Bank charges were twenty-four thousand and the internet was twenty thousand as per budget.
Well, the bank fees are the merchant account fees. Those are this, those are what we consider the bank fees.
Okay, that's, that's that three percent, um, that, is that correct?
Correct.
Is that what we've been paying as three percent?
Yes.
Y- yes, Mike.
Okay, so we could have saved six thousand dollars this year just the R2 parking lots. If we did negotiate it a better credit card fee.
We will get there.
Okay, good. Yeah, no, and I can see where we're gonna save on some other fees, which is great.
Okay.
Okay, Larry?
You have a, yeah, I got a couple more questions here. How do we get paid? Uh, Kevin?
That is a direct deposit, correct Nicole?
Currently we get, so this is what the merchant account does. It have, I have a daily deposit into the account every day.
Okay, from, from the transactions of that day.
So the transactions of that day, it takes one day for it to go from the T2 to the merchant account holder. And another day, so it's a two-day delay, but yes, we do get daily deposits for whatever transactions occur.
All right. Are there any bank charges associated with that?
That.
Just that three percent fee.
That, that's included in the three percent fee?
That is the three percent. That is, that's the whole charge for the, for those transactions, correct?
Okay. Uh. All right. Um, signage for the QR codes. Who pays for that?
I would order them and then I would break out the cost. I would order it as a lot. So the city signs and your signs. And then I would break out the cost for the metro signs out of that invoice.
So we pay for them?
Correct.
Okay. Uh. How does this affect what we pay you for enforcement?
It doesn't. We would still enforce in the lot. We'd still have to enter the lot, write the tickets. Uh, verify the vehicle parking session, all that.
However, we do have some, some time in there and you guys not, have not indicated. However, we do have some, some time in there and you guys not, have not indicated yet. That you want us to stop doing the coin and the, the actual cash collections.
Yes. Uh, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
To happen, then it would reduce some of that time that we have in there. You know, and they go in once a week to do that. It's not gonna be a huge amount, but it will be something.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, okay, Kevin, so Kevin, how the. This takes you. Out of the picture of collections, how, how do, uh, what are we paying you then for enforcement? Uh, how, how do, how do I look at that?
That is on that spreadsheet Nicole had shared earlier with the breakdown for the annual cost to the city.
Okay, what is that?
Can you bring that back up Nicole?
Give me a moment, I'll get it back up.
I see another Mike here. Hi, Mike. Yes, we can.
Bersati with us?
Yes.
There he is.
So I'll throw this out there since Bersati's with us. Shimmy and Bersati, if you guys could come in and sign those resolutions that were approved. Earlier, I would much appreciate that.
I'll be there tomorrow, Nicole.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Hey Bersati.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Mike.
Is that big enough for everyone?
Yep.
We have that, looks like a hundred and ninety-one a year, Nicole?
Yep.
Well, and then we've got. Uh, so that's off season.
Here, it's more than that because it's both of them.
And then you could go, yep. And then you can actually go all the way, all the way down to this kiosk alarm because if there's no more kiosks, that's gone as well.
Okay, so again, my question is, what are we paying for enforcement? What would we be paying for enforcement?
So law enforcement, we're showing, um, that's, that's where the majority of it is. Is about thirty, it's almost thirty-five thousand.
Okay. Okay. Those other things would go away, but we would, it, we still would be paying about thirty-five thousand. For lot enforcement. Right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Nicole. Any other questions?
Uh.
Um, I have a question for Kevin. Um, Kevin, if we wanted to have our own, um, ticket machine. Is it possible to have one for our employee?
Uh, so we would have to charge for, or we'd have to buy a printer. You'd have to get the thermal receipt paper for the printer. And you'd have to get a license for the app and those do require specific phones and those licenses are. Uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars a piece.
They're here or just in general?
In general, it's seven hundred and fifty for that license.
Okay, one, one time fee?
Yes.
Same with the machine, one time fee, just buy it?
Uh, yes, the only reoccurring fee associated with the printers for the tickets would be the ticket rolls.
Okay.
Hey, uh, Shimmy?
Yes, sir.
Are you there? I've got a question for Nicole because did, did we just say thirty-five thousand dollars a year for lawn, or for the parking enforcement?
That's what we're showing, yes.
And the thing said three hours a day, so thirty-five thousand divided by three sixty-five. Divided by three hours a day is thirty-two bucks an hour. Do we pay the parking people thirty-two bucks an hour? The people that are out there writing the tickets?
Uh, that would be a question for Nicole?
Yeah, maybe Nicole can answer that.
We do not pay people that much per hour, no. But when you add in benefits and those other things, this is what we've got here. We've got parking staff. And average rate of pay is twenty-one forty-four.
Okay, and that includes the benefits?
It does include the benefits. Here, I'll share the screen again.
Okay.
That's all.
Might as well leave it up there.
Let, let me just say that I, I like the parking enforcement people. And I like Kevin. And, and I know I'm gonna like Juan when I meet Juan. I mean, I like him already, but. How come there's another ten bucks an hour, uh, three hundred and sixty-five days a year for three hours? When the people aren't getting paid that much?
I believe she said it's, uh, with their, uh.
I've got it right here. If you wanna look at the benefits, I have the hourly rates, I have how it's calculated, I have all that on here.
Okay, I'm just curious why it comes out to be, you know, another. I mean, that's, are we getting overcharged?
No, she said it's benefits, I believe, Mike?
Correct. Are you not hearing me?
I'm hearing you, but, but it's, it's eleven thousand dollars a year more than they actually, actually cost.
I've got the breakdown right here for, for what that is. So, you're, so the amount that, so. I, I don't, I don't know how to answer that any differently.
Okay. I mean, I, I guess it says right here, thirty-one seventy-five an hour.
Yes, with their benefits and everything, that's what, uh, that's the total cost, Mike.
Okay.
That's what it looks like.
Okay.
Uh, they're actually getting twenty-one forty-four, but with all the benefits and stuff, it adds up to be thirty-one seventy-five an hour.
Okay, I thought she said twenty-one something included the benefits.
No.
That's before.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
I under, I understand now, thank you.
That's, that's okay, it's.
The benefits add up.
You know, our motto is it shouldn't be this hard in the finance department. All we do is add and subtract, right?
Yeah, it's not chemistry or physics.
Larry, anything else over there? Any other questions you can think about before, uh?
I think I'm good. I, I think I'm good. Thank you for putting that all together. Is the city going to this?
Yes, we've already started implementing the QR code sign, uh, throughout the city lots and on street.
Okay.
Uh, Kevin, question about the kiosks themselves. Are you guys planning on taking them out?
Uh, if that's the direction given by the board, we can remove them.
Are you talking about the TPB?
Uh, no, are, are you talking about all the other kiosks?
I'm talking about, uh, yes, yes, I did. I was talking about the kiosk the city owned.
Uh, that was a discussion Juan and I had, and I think it's gonna be coming in the future that we just start strategically removing some of these. Except for the busier places in town. Those will probably be the last to go.
The city owns them, correct? This, it's not, uh, are we gonna save them if we take them out?
Uh, the idea, the idea is to put them in, uh, in busy locations like on Manitou Avenue.
Okay. As an alternative, as an alternative?
Just where they're needed. Uh, in, in, instead of ordering more, with the, the idea is to, uh, start re- removing them from areas that are not as busy.
Wh- why, why would you, I don't understand. Why would you keep those if the QR code works so fast?
Oh, because uh, usually in, uh, busy areas, you do wanna have both, the QR code. And, uh, just mostly like on the progressive area that we have where, uh, parking is where we would have them. So we would not have it like on the economy area.
Why, why, I'm still trying to get it, why? Why would you?
Due to how busy it is.
And that's the only option for people that would rather pay with coin.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. So you, you still want some people to, you still wanna be able to handle people who wanna pay with coin or cash, huh?
Well, as we're making the change, I think it would be wise to keep that option in some places, but eventually. Cause it does take a lot of staff time to do this. I mean, it's an entire day with at least two people. That, that's all they do all day is those collections.
So those, those ones in the downtown, in the downtown area, those take cash in addition to credit card?
Just coin. The only ones that accept cash are the two in the Wichita lot and the one in the Canyon lot. Everything else is coin or card.
So downtown, you could put a coin in down, in, in, uh, how many people do that?
Uh, that's something I've been watching for the last year. Let me pull this out and I can tell you what. What was done last month. Um, so for the Schmishy lot, one percent.
No, I'm not interested in our lots. I, I'm, I already know that. We, we.
One, one percent of on-street meters used cash or coin.
One percent.
Yeah, eleven, just under twelve hundred dollars in ca, in coin on-street last month.
One percent?
Yeah.
Is that what you said? Okay.
Yes.
Why would you keep those for one percent usage?
That is a question that I've asked for the last year, because like I said, it. A minimum two staff members all day long to deal with that, with collectings changing, the bank run, all of that.
But, but Larry, a year ago, when Kevin told us we needed to get rid of taking coins. We were at six percent, I think. Were we at six percent last year, Kevin? Now we're at one percent?
Yeah.
So really that.
More to card.
I mean, there's almost no coin anymore.
Right, and that was why we decided to keep it. But now it, uh, you know, it just seems like it, you don't need it at all. But that's where I'm still back to, why would you keep the kiosk? Any kiosk, even in a busy area, going to the QR code?
You. QR codes are usually used where, uh, there's less, on average for every age basis. So on a busy area where you have a lot of turnover, you want, you wanna have them available for people to access the QR code and also have access to that, to that pay station.
But see, I'm, that's why. If, if there is a sign over there, Juan, it's available for them on their phone right away.
Yeah, see, that's what, see, I'm, I'm saying, you guys are going to keep. What you, you know, the, the, um, kiosk. Why, you know, in a, in a busy area, our area is nothing but busy. Should we be keeping a kiosk in addition to going to the QR code is what I'm getting at.
This is like a, this is like a forecasting like down the road. You gotta do it in a process, so eventually we will be phasing out certain areas. And then.
I know certain areas, I understand that. You're taking the busiest area and you're not phasing it out. Our whole area is our busiest area. And that's where I'm, I'm really confused that you guys are selling QR code as a good way to go. But you're not buying into it a hundred percent.
We're doing it slow. We will get there.
Hmm, okay.
Their intention is to get there, Larry, is just, uh. Gonna be down the road, it looks like, um.
Well, see, that would apply to us. I mean, our busiest area is the Wichita lot.
Right.
Uh, with, if we use the city's logic, we need to add the QR code and keep the kiosk.
We already have the, you know, we, we, we have the text to pay, um. We already, already have that option.
You know, but what, what I'm saying is.
But I, I get what you're saying, but I, I, when I was looking at it. I thought that we're eliminating, let's say, two kiosks. And by not having those two kiosks, we're, we're, we're automatically saving twenty-four thousand dollars in.
Exactly, I, and that's what, but the city's not following that logic.
I think they will. They're just gonna, they're just a little slower.
Yeah, but there's a process to, uh, do that. So the ways, the way we're starting that is phasing them, phasing them out slowly, like in the non-busy areas. Eventually we will, we will get to the busy downtown Manitou progressive area. But it's, it's pretty much, we're gonna be doing it in phases is what we're saying.
Okay.
And Juan, are we saving those machines? Or are we like gonna store them or in case we're making the wrong move, are we, are we saving those?
Yeah, initially what, what we wanna do is, uh, the new ones that we have in those, uh, dead areas that are not as busy. We'll probably look at the ones that are old, like let's say on Manitou Avenue and swap those out. Does what we place it, am I thinking right, Kevin, every five years?
Uh, five every year.
Or every year, right? Five every year.
Okay.
All right. I don't have, thank you very much, Juan and, uh, and Kevin, both for your input into this. I've, I've learned a lot. Thank you.
Any other questions about the presentation? All right. Thank you, Juan. Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. Um, I have a questions for, I have a question for Larry and Mike. Uh, do we wanna? Um, add to the agenda for next month, um, SP plus presentation as well?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we, I think we should, anybody that can do the service, we should ask.
Okay, all right, sounds good. I will do that. Um. All right, any discussion? Any public comment? I don't think anybody was here with the public, um. I do see, uh, Natalie, I, I know she asked when the meeting is and, uh, she's muted Natalie, you're good, you just, uh.
Yeah, I just haven't been able to, uh, jump in and, and, you know, be able to, to, uh, advocate for you, represent you as, as a liaison. Sort of tracking mobility. Um, I think the only thing I wanted to mention was that I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Juan. But I think in January, council's gonna be discussing employee parking. Is that correct?
It's gonna be in, uh, in February.
February, okay. So that's something I think you, you all just might wanna track and probably have interest in. But, uh, other than that, I'm just, I'm just listening in.
Okay, thanks for being here. Always good to see you. All right, uh, no discussion, no public comment. If everyone is good. This meeting is adjourned.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.